We're going to stand for the Pledge of the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the purpose of this meeting today is to review the fiscal year '24, which is this coming year's school budget, make any changes we feel are necessary. If changes are made, we will vote on them and then we will adjourn. That is the only agenda item we have on our -- for today. So what we're looking at is the budget that was voted on at the town meeting in May. There were, there are copies floating around somewhere. There's also an agenda floating around, although again, it's a one-item agenda. Is everybody set?
Are the physical documents over there of the budgets?
I'm sorry, what?
Are the physical ones of the budget right over here? There were.
I don't know if there's any. Maybe I'll distribute it. I don't know what's down there. Do you need, do you need a copy of this budget?
I can use my computer.
Okay, all right. So really what I want to do is just kind of go through the budget, specifically looking at lines that were not expended or were not fully expended from last year, ending June 30th, and see if we feel that those line items are still needed and if the dollar figures in those line items are still appropriate. And then, of course, if anybody else has anything along the way to add. Everybody set? I, for some reason, do not have internet service, so I'm struggling here.
Oh, it's working.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why my computer still doesn't want to acknowledge it. So that's going to be a little bit hard for me. So do you have the, do you have the 831 budget up?
Is that?
The one that Kayla just sent to us today.
The expenditure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you can just help me along the way, because I can't call mine up. So the first line item that, that I noticed, and I'm going off of the expenditure report, so I don't have line items, but I do have categories. The first one being our legal counsel. We still had quite a bit left in our legal counsel budget, and I just wanted to make sure. I think that's because he, that our legal counsel raised their rates, but I just want to double-check if that's true or not. That's what I thought I remembered. Okay, thanks. And then, again, you two can jump in at any point if you have something in between. I see your hand, Mark. Hang on one second. The next line would be the therapeutic services. In our, in our, in our current budget that was voted on, therapeutic services went up quite a bit, went up by $67,000. And I just, again, want to make sure that that's appropriate, considering that we only went over by $2,000 this year. So I just want to make sure that we're, that's.
We hired a .35 physical therapist. And then there were other contractual increases.
And then there were what?
There were other contractual increases as well.
Increases like, like salary increases? Okay.
Do you know what the salary was for the .35? Look.
That'd be great, thank you.
Excuse me. And is PT shared within the union?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's listed here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that's our percentage of therapeutic services? Jen, do you want to speak to that?
It is your share.
And so between contractual increases and hiring the . What'd you say she was, .35?
.35.
That necessitated $67,000 increase?
Yes, I'm looking right now.
Okay.
We also had a school psychologist on maternity leave, and we had to contract with James Levine and Associates to perform any testing required by individualized education plans.
Is that psychologist still going to be on maternity leave come this year?
I believe the maternity leave ended was through the end of the year.
Right, okay. So, so I'm talking about this, this coming year. We've increased it by a significant amount, $63,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were on the expenditure report where you were before, so.
No.
My mistake.
That's fine. So that's, I'm trying to justify that increase, that's all. Not justify, but just explain.
So the budgeted salary is $28,225.
And was that not in there last year?
No.
Okay.
We contracted with CAPS Collaborative.
Perfect, okay. And then that .35 is just based on the needs that we have in the school, so it could fluctuate depending if we needed more services or less services from that person, or are they locked in with that .35?
Yeah, so that is the, the amount for this year. And then for the following year, we reassess what the needs are across the schools.
Okay. And so when we contracted out this current year, did that come under sped contracted services?
Yes.
So, but that is still staying the same as last year?
Yep. So when that happened, when we were able to hire PT, that happened after this budget was created.
So are we still feeling, then, that that budget line is appropriate? That sped contracted services, so line 40 in our budget, seeing as how we now no longer have contracted out PT services?
We do, we do have some consulting that we do with James Levine and Associates. Anything else that you wanted to share, Caitlin?
Katrina has a list of all the contracted services that we use.
Thank you.
Do you want me to? So items out of those lines, we pay CES. James Levine Associates is a, is a big one. Legal counsel, specifically to special education, Pioneer Hearing Services, Tate, Hirschberg, Kaveral. There's been a, those are typically where we contract services to.
Okay. And I guess my question is, do, now that we have this physical therapist in-house, do we still need the same amount of money? Because that amount of money last year, $30,000, was paying part of the contracted services of a physical therapist.
Yes, we also ran well over on sped contracted services by $50,000 this year.
Okay. And, okay. All right, and you foresee the need to be the same for this coming year, even though we've taken the PT out?
It's hard to identify exactly what the need would be, but I could see that if you wanted to reduce that line to reflect the reduction of, of the PT services, that line could be reduced.
My estimates are maybe reduced $2,000 to $3,000.
Can you just say that again? I'm sorry.
$2,000 to $3,000.
For all of the contracted services?
Yeah, for line 40. Line 40.
Is it, that's a, there's no need to have contracted services for, say, the things we ran into with James Levine Associates? That there's nothing unexpected.
Okay. And then the next one that I see is the substitute salaries for regular ed and substitute salaries for special ed. Those also. Were not expended, so like, yeah, you don't have lines.
Substitute salaries sped in regular, 40 and 80, or eight, sorry.
Yeah, but what was actually spent?
Oh.
I just, I'm cross-referencing it with the.
It looks like, like $21,000 was spent between those two lines?
Yeah.
Or $20,000?
Okay. Because on the one I have, there's, there was still a significant. They had been increased by $10,000 and by $4,000, but we didn't actually even go through the entire amount this year. So, again, are we expecting a lot of?
So we budgeted based on need of substitutes, looking at past history. In the most recent year, it's been difficult to find substitutes, and that might explain why it's not expended.
And do we feel that that's going to be any different this year?
It's hard to say if we'll get substitutes or not, but the budgeted amounts that have been there previously were to meet needs.
Well, the budgeted amount actually went from 80, from $28,000 to $30,000 to now $40,000. So it's, it's quite a bit of an increase, but we haven't actually used anywhere near that.
Because we are, it's difficult to find substitutes?
Yep.
So that explains why.
And the previous year, we spent $41,922, which is why we, in January, for that budget, raised it to $40,000.
Okay. So I totally understand it's hard to find substitutes. It's hard to find substitutes everywhere, which is why I'm wondering if we, if we need to have that line increased as much as it is if we don't actually think we're going to find the people to fill those roles. Do you want to just come up to the microphone?
Just personally, I think that to keep that in there, in case we can find the people, because I know that some days last year, we were having people who were not like Unit A staff covering in for, when you'd have to take a break. Sometimes you'd have to find people, like office staff would come help. So if we can get subs, if we could find them, I think that every single staff member would be like super appreciative of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt that we, we need substitutes. I, I really don't think we're going to find substitutes. And so I just, I'm trying to be very thoughtful about having money in a line that we really don't think we're actually going to be able to expend because we can't find the personnel to, to fill that role. The next ones are line 47 and 48, the professional development substitute salaries. Again, there was 100%. I think there was 100% of the one line left of professional development, oh, sorry, of professional development substitute sped.
Substitute sped. Yeah, there was only a $1,000 in there, and it wasn't spent.
Yeah.
And I think we had that conversation last time about having two separate line items for paraprofessionals subs. And so I think that's why we like significantly decreased, but I don't know if we can leave it at zero. Caitlin, were, I know we, I was just sharing with Mackenzie. I know that we had talked about that at one of the previous meetings of having separate line items for when there was a substitute for professional development versus a substitute for any other time. And was that determined that we needed it that way?
I think it's beneficial for reporting to have things broken down for special ed purposes, but in the past, we haven't had a mechanism to really track whether someone would require a sub because of a special education for professional development or not. Moving forward, we do have a new system that, since we have the newer eye vision system that has a employee portal where we may be able to track it. We're still undergoing training right now. So I could see eliminating that line, of course, just for reporting purposes. If we do have a way of tracking it, it is a nice, it would be nice to be able to keep track of it that way.
And you would be tracking if the sub was needed for professional development purposes, not necessarily the person that's coming in? Like, that doesn't matter. They're just a sub no matter what. You're just tracking why the teachers are using their time?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, but either way, either way, however you track it, my, I guess my point was simply that it was not expended. And again, so are we feeling like we need to have that amount of money in the budget that wasn't spent at all this?
I think they didn't know how to track it, so it wasn't being tracked, which is why it wasn't used out of that line. Is part of the issue.
Okay. Okay. And so we, we, we feel like with the new reporting, you'll be able to track that better?
We'll have to see. Again, we're still going through training on it and getting, we're just now getting everyone's at it. So for this year, it'd be nice to see if we're, if we have the capability to do that. But I could see if you wanted to roll them together. Other schools, when I came to this role, some of the budgets do have this line specific to professional development, special ed or professional development. Other ones don't. And that's up to the school committee, whether you'd like to continue with that or not.
Okay. But so even if they were not able to distinguish between the two, even the professional development just subsalary, so not necessarily sped, was 97% still there at the end of the year? So, again, I go back to, are we needing the amount of money that we've budgeted for if it's not being spent by the end of the school year?
But what we're saying is that we haven't had a way to be able to spend that, to know that that substitute was hired for a professional development reason. So that's why that money wasn't spent at that line.
Okay. So they weren't, it wasn't spent out of the substitute regular salary. It wasn't spent out of the substitute sped salary. It wasn't spent out of the professional development substitute salary, and it wasn't spent out of the professional developing sped salary. So it just wasn't spent. I mean, even if you decided how to track it, the point is the money wasn't spent, because there was still money left in all of those lines. So do we need to continue to have so much money in those sped lines if they are not being spent in any of those, in any which way you want to designate these people leaving or needing subs? The money wasn't spent.
I just would like to add a perspective that while we are in need of substitutes and have not been able to have enough substitutes in, I think it would leave the district in a poor position to not have budgeted for something that is needed.
And, and I, and I'm not suggesting we zero it out. So maybe I need to clarify that. I'm just wondering if we need the amount that is in there, because none of the substitute categories were spent down. And if we have a better way to track it, that's great, but we still have four different lines that have significant amount of money and none of which were spent down to zero. So do we? So, do we really need all of those lines to be at the level that they're at? I'm not suggesting we zero any of them out, I'm just suggesting that we don't necessarily have to have them at the level that they're at, if they didn't get spent this year.
So, for FY '22, we did overspend that line for substitutes? It just varies from year to year based on need and what's available?
Okay. But we didn't last year. Are we anticipating a lot of professional development happening that people need to be traveling to? Is there some reason that we should feel like we need a lot of substitute lines in particular?
We have a literacy program that we have been signed on.
We're continuing our science of reading with the Hill for Literacy Professional Development. We're hoping to be able to do grade level meetings, which would entail grade levels from across the district, meeting together, which would cause us to need substitute help. Two of our districts are implementing a brand-new reading series, which comes with professional development and probably release time. So, again, we've had COVID, we've had a year of not having substitutes. I would hate to cut a substitute budget without knowing that we're not going to find substitutes, because we do need them.
Okay. We have four different substitute lines. I feel like we could probably do something with those lines and still have substitutes available. Again, four different lines totaling 48, 49, 69, 69, hang on, let me do some quick math. You know, like $50,000 worth of substitute available.
Can we just take a step back for a second? I'm confused at why we are trying to cut the budget again when the town voted for this budget? I'm like really confused why we're fighting about all these little things that we've already voted on.
So, I don't think we're fighting. I think we're looking at this budget again to make sure that what was voted on is what we actually need. I don't want to hold on to money that is not necessary for us to have. I want to make sure that our budgets reflect what we actually need, higher or lower or the same. There's been several that people have said, "No, we need it this way." Okay, so we keep it that way. But I feel like our job is to go back through, and the request from the town was for all town departments to go back through their budget, and just make sure that their budgets are reflective of what they need, and so that's what I'm doing. And so, any line that I'm seeing that we've not spent down from last year, I'm questioning why we have that money there. If we're not spending it, if at the end of the year, we're just going to give it back to the town, why are we still having it there? It doesn't seem, so, as long as people have a good rationale for it, that makes sense, then that's fine. But that was my thinking going through this budget.
One, just one more suggestion as far as the substitutes. There were times last year where there wasn't substitutes for my special needs child, and either the principal or people that were unqualified to do that did, and hence, a lot of other problems became of that.
But that wasn't because we didn't have the money for it, that was because we didn't have the people for it, which I totally understand, but that's not a lack of money, that's a lack of people being able to come and do that job.
So, if we have that available, we should try to use it, is just all I have to say about that.
I agree, and that's why I'm not zeroing out any substitute, I'm not saying we shouldn't have substitutes, I'm saying we have an enormous amount of money in substitute lines, and we didn't spend it last year. Even if we needed it, it didn't get spent, we couldn't find the people. So, do we need to continue to have that money just sit there if we're not confident that it's going to be used? That's where I'm coming from on this. I want to make sure that the money that we have in our budget is money that we feel that we are legitimately going to use and need, and then we say, yes, our budget is what it is, and that's what we need, and we move forward, and we go to the town and report that.
I'd like to add one more thing. If the money is there, we are able to fulfill our due diligence in seeking people, but if the money's not there, we won't really be able to do due diligence and really continued efforts to have substitutes come in.
Yes, and that's why I'm not suggesting we zero any of the lines out. I'm just suggesting, I'm just asking if we need the amount that is currently in there. I'm fully in support of getting substitutes if we need them, and finding the best substitutes we can, but I'm also very well aware, being in the educational field, that there aren't a lot of substitutes there. So, again, this money just sits there. It's not going to be spent, because we don't have personnel to spend it on.
I think we might have overspent historically prior to last year.
I mean, I'm looking at 2022, and we didn't, but it's, you know.
2022 is where we overspent. Well, not the sped, the 28 to 41. Am I looking at that wrong?
Which one are you looking at?
You're talking about the substitutes?
Oh, that one? Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, no, I wasn't looking at that one, I'm looking at these down here. So, we budgeted, we actually only spent 200.
These two are extremely overspent.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm just going to keep on going through, I'm happy to hear the rationale as to why we're doing what we're doing. Sure.
Okay. Originally, before you had started to look at each line item, I had my hand up, and I wanted to make the statement that Jen did, so thank you. But I guess before that, first off, it's nice to see Superintendent Colkeen back, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to see you. Yeah, I, as a staff member and as a taxpayer, I am confused as to why we are looking at a budget that the community, a lot of these folks and a lot of other people, spent a very long evening trying to get passed. It feels like we did the job to get this done, and it still feels like we are being, you are trying to cut from it when you do not need to. There are still many areas in our budget that are underfunded. I see the paraprofessional salaries are down $30,000. We have a, we used to have a learning support center that was filled by a staff, Unit A staff member and two paraprofessionals. We have been beating the drum about bringing that back and getting that. I think there's some little bit of motion there to get a paraprofessional in there, that is not enough. There is not enough funding for important things like that, and I'm actually really confused why we're trying to lower any line items here. It would be fine to move them, if you want to adjust them and move them, but you have the school committee representing the school, and we had this massive town meeting, biggest one I've been to in 30 years, and we got it passed, and here we are two months later, two and a half months later, and we're looking to cut areas, and it's just very confusing to me. So, I wonder if you folks could speak on that?
In regards to the LSC, I asked several times if the LSC staff was included in the budget, and I was assured that it was. So, if the LSC goes forward, the budget is reflective of those people that need to be in it. It's a matter of whether we find the staffing for that program or not. I would defer to Jen to give any updates, if you have any updates on that.
I don't have any updates, we are in the midst of the interim principal search.
Right.
And I would want to partner with the, and have the principal partner with the staff to make sure it's appropriately staffed, not just with the Unit B, but also with the Unit A, to provide supervision for that paraprofessional.
Sure, I appreciate that. I would say that if that was in the budget, then that amount would be reflected as not being spent under either special ed salaries or, because that's who, well, would, I don't know if our last person who ran the LSC was considered regular ed, special ed, I don't know. But one way or another, that, whatever it was, $70,000 salary or whatever, that would show as not being spent, and that doesn't show here. So, that tells me that's not in the budget.
I don't know that that would necessarily be the case, it may be that those people were redistributed to other positions.
That's exactly what I'm saying, to other positions, so it's not in there for that position.
I'm going by what I was told when I asked the question specifically last spring, and I was specifically told that the budget reflected that program being in it. So, I can only go by what I was told.
And that is just one example of areas where money could be spent. As I mentioned, the paraprofessional salaries are down, you know, we had paraprofessionals who left last year and were not replaced. There are other situations, we're still waiting for the heating and cooling system to be fixed, I know we're waiting on a grant for that, but there, which we've been talking about for nearly a year now. I just think that the fight was so hard to get this money, and it's really confusing that you guys are looking at trying to cut anything.
The next place that, again, I want to make sure that we funded properly, is the instructional supplies. I know that there's going to be new curriculum, you said, right?
Correct.
Is that coming out of that line, or is that SIR money we're using for that? Just remind me, I know we've talked about it.
I believe it came out of
Last year's budget.
Some revolving accounts and some other money we had used. Caitlin, can you clarify?
I'd have to look. It's first, several schools are going through, and I don't want to give you an answer that isn't complete, I'd really have to go back and look.
So, we can get that information for the next meeting, or to share in email?
Field trips and programs, are we hoping that they are going to be, again, that was something that was not expended, do we anticipate more field trips happening this year? There was quite a bit of that money in that line. Let me just double check that line.
Yeah.
I think field trips are an integral part of the educational experience, and I would vote.
I'm not asking that we cut it, I'm just asking if that, do we anticipate?
I was, I didn't finish. So, I'm hoping that we keep it in the budget as is, so we can provide those opportunities for our students.
So, like half was spent?
Yeah, okay, I wanted to make sure that that was the same as what I had. Yes, I hear you, I agree with you, that's why I'm asking, are we anticipating getting to, back to a place where we're taking more field trips? Are we anticipating that for this coming year?
As I said, yes, it's an integral part of the educational experience for our students.
There was also nothing, testing and assessment materials?
Yeah, I don't think that was touched, or it hasn't been.
I'm curious why nothing was expended out of the testing and material line? Test, sorry, testing and assessment materials? I assume this would be our screening tools and our DIBs and our things like that?
We did just order new screening tools, we're looking at using DESI-approved screening tools.
So, last year, no money needed to come out of that line, but you're anticipating you will need money this year?
Again, I'd have to go back and talk to Caitlin and look at our records, but yes, we need to make sure that we are screening our students appropriately.
And then, if you're picking up new material, new screening tools, is $1,600 going to be enough to cover those screening tools?
Again, I'd have, I would have to get back to you on that.
Experiential learning, that's another place that had a large overage. Are we doing anything differently with that program this coming year?
What line is that?
There was very little spent out of that line.
So, that was used years ago to help provide support for students outside of the classroom. I'm hoping if we have something like the LSC, or some other kind of student support intervention, that we could use that funding, as we continue to explore options for student support, both within and without special education.
Okay, but as it stands right now, you don't have a plan for that currently?
Well, we are planning ways to have supportive classrooms across the union and within the schools, so yes, there is a plan to look at offering support for other students, whether it's the Learning Support Center or other support mechanisms.
And so, there's $10,000 budgeted there, is that, if you're not sure what the program's going to be, how, are you confident that that's enough money?
So, I think I explained to you that that money could be used to offer support, and we would operate within our budget.
Someone just asked me, and said that that line is also Morse Hill now?
Oh, Morse Hill is another experience for our students to learn. It's a ropes course, it's physical learning, and so, that's another way for our students to experience learning outside of the classroom.
It was the nature's classroom line previously, right?
I think we had a separate nature's classroom.
We did. In addition to the experiential learning? I thought that had replaced it.
And I know we talked about the networking and telecommunication, we're getting a new phone system, is that this line?
No, that's our new accounting and payroll technology.
Oh, that's, okay.
Mackenzie, can I just say something?
Yep.
I want to just go back to the sub money you were talking about. We haven't had subs for quite a long time now, but we are the ones that are doing it all. And I think that maybe we should be looking at doing something for us, because we're jumping in and taking care of all the classes, all the teachers who, I mean, it's a big thing for all the parents who have to do this, because we have nobody that wants to come into school. And we're hoping when we do our negotiations this year, that we can, you know, do something with that, because it's really just not fair. That's all I'm going to say with that.
And then, technology maintenance and supplies, that's another line that wasn't, unless you have differently on yours, wasn't expended very much. Again, are we anticipating different technology maintenance needs or supplies?
Yeah, that much was left, like 43.
Yeah, I know, we started out at five.
Okay.
We do cycle through technology devices, Chromebooks have a little shorter lifespan than Apple products, we cycle through leases. I think, I don't want to speak for Tom, but there's a technology plan in place over the course of not just one, but many years, and so, we try to budget to support the technology department. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Tom? I didn't want to speak.
One thing I'd like to add is that this year, we've had more broken screens on iPads that'll need to be addressed. Some of our oldest generation of iPads are going to fall out of support, so, and I know that we had a budget freeze back in the spring too, so I just resisted doing any kind of money spending at all. So, I don't know if that reflects in the money that you're seeing that didn't get spent.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that could be, because there was only a couple hundred dollars spent out of that line for the entire year, so. And you're going to have to remind me what this is, the replacement of equipment, the ACQ improvement, fixed assets, replacement of equipment?
Caitlin, would you speak to that?
Yeah, so, ACQ is acquisition of equipment. We have lines for new equipment replacement, I can look into what we have spent in previous years, but we did resist purchasing things that weren't necessities last year, so some of those lines that are lower, were just out of just holding off on making purchases.
And what kind of, just remind me what kind of equipment that is? Like what?
So, which one specifically?
The line 102? Like, that's not technology, right? Is that like chairs, what is that?
And like 101, we were over by In like 101, we were over by like $4,300 last year.
Acquisition of new equipment versus replacement of equipment?
Containers, we had our container rental out of replacement of equipment.
So, but specifically the replacement of equipment. So what kind of equipment does that, does that cover?
I'd have to look back at last year and then the acquisition of new, the, some of the tilt skillet.
Right, no, I knew that one. It was just the replacement of equipment that I was curious about. I couldn't remember what equipment that, that fell under, what equipment fell under that line.
Like what type, like if something was to happen and something new had to be purchased, what would fall under that?
And I can go on and you can, we can circle back if you need to take a minute to look. And then, well, actually, the very next line too, the equipment lease. So again, if you could just kind of clarify what equipment we're talking about that we lease?
We lease copiers.
That's what I was wondering. Is that what that is? Because there was.
But nothing came out of it last year, right?
That was my next point. Nothing came out of that line. So a copier lease we would certainly have spent money on, so.
We haven't spent it in a couple of years. In 2022, we didn't spend it either.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I thought that was the case. And, you know, Jen, you make a good point. We didn't spend it in 2022 either.
So I think Caitlin can get back to you with those particular answers.
Yeah, 102 and 103 weren't spent at all, so.
Yeah.
Even like previously.
Yeah. So I certainly would be interested in those two lines, 102 and 103, since, as you say, they have not been spent in two years. That's $2,100, $21,000.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to talk about?
I didn't know.
No, I just, I think, I don't know if this is a question for you or Caitlin, but when we have these line items, are we required to have all of them that are here? Or could we say, okay, we haven't spent out 102 and 103 in the last five years, making things up right now? But say we haven't spent it in the last five years, we want to get, can we get rid of those line items and redistribute that money to a different line item essentially? Or do we need those there just for like rules?
Reporting?
Reporting, there we go, better word. I guess, I think the biggest thing is looking through this and it's just important that we are allocating the money in the right line items. And if we're not using them in that line item and the money's just sitting there and then we, at the end of the year are like, hey, we need $14,000. And we're like, hey, there's been $14,000, you know, in 103 for the last five years. Why didn't we move it up earlier if we haven't been using it there? So I think it's more of just kind of looking at those different line items, making sure we're distributing the money the way that it makes the most sense and that we're using it that way. And if there are extra line items that we don't have to have, you know, let's find a way that it makes sense instead of looking at equipment leases and copier leases and iPad leases and having them as all different line items if we don't need them to be. I think that would make life a little easier for.
Yes, consolidation of lines, I think we'd be careful with ones that are meant for instruction versus ones that are meant for operations until we keep these lines separate.
Okay. So I think like determining what the definition of what would fall under those line items and then we can kind of look at that and see what makes the most sense to help you guys out too.
I can get back to you with a more complete answer. If the school committee would like to cut any of these lines, that is your ability to do that.
Yeah, I just, especially, specifically 102, 103, only because we've not used them in years. So, so it doesn't, it begs the question, why do we have them there? Is there a concern or a thought that there would need to be two preschool classrooms next year?
Right now, we're at 17. But I do want to share, and Karina has shared details with us, that we will be needing additional ESL support for our English language learners more than we thought at the end of the school year due to students moving in. So that is also an increased cost.
So I'd like to add to that, that for line 74, our budgeted number was 181,400, which needed to be at that time. Much more recently, we have updated information and have contracts secured for FY, well, for the remainder of the fiscal year. And there's approximately $20,000 there that we could move.
So you're saying it's not going to come to 181,400?
No, approximately 160,000 for what is in place right now. If a vendor, so both parties can cancel the contract with 30 days' notice. So if the vendor canceled with 30 days' notice and we needed to go with another vendor who was slightly higher, it doesn't account for that. But the contracts that we have in place right now for everything that is known, approximately 160.
Great. And we are moving forward with acquiring our own transportation. So hopefully, hopefully, we can make that number even smaller.
And Karina, with the more ESL support needed, does the impact that the state just made with licensing as far as like ELL and allowing that a little more flexibility than how strict they were before, does that help us out at all to help provide those services with not additional costs because we have staff that could help with that or?
Yes, there is that potential because of those changes that were made and they were made with very good reason. So yes, it does widen the candidate pool.
Okay. But we're still needing to hire for an ESL position at just Irving or at Union 28 as a whole?
The, the need in Irving will be almost over.
Do you know the anticipated cost of that?
That will depend on, on salary. So, no.
And you're feeling that it can't be addressed with the current staff that we have to Caitlin's point about the change in the requirements?
To have somebody from the current staff, it would mean they would not be available for the position that they have currently because the need is almost at point eight at the. So it would mean even if they could get the licensure as the regulations go right now, it wouldn't be available for any other responsibilities that are slated for. Not any other, but post-up. So it is a possibility, but it's not as easy a transition of if somebody is point five and they really want to have another role at point five.
Yeah. So if it's a point eight, you said, point eight position, so at our highest salary would be like $85,000. So the most we would need is probably $70,000? So we have 20 from this line, so we just need to find another 50. Caitlin, do we have anything worked into already?
We do. We have a point four. We've budgeted for a point two.
Okay.
We had 20, no, $15,000 budgeted.
Okay. So we're like 35 shy. And are we, are there any, I know you were talking about preschool, so we'll probably go back to that. But besides preschool, are there any other grade levels that we've seen a dramatic like increase or decrease in enrollment and/or services that will be needed for the fall? To just make sure we're in a good spot to support everyone?
Our total enrollment is down by one and this could change dramatically if we have possible transfer students actually transfer out. So right now, we're down one total enrollment.
With more that have said they are transferring out? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Possible transfers, yes.
So no increase in needs? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Right, we're down one.
Okay.
And that's just a child as a whole, not a child that had services?
All I have is the total enrollment.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, what you were doing. Okay. Oh, sorry.
Just here to circle back to preschool. I've heard in the community that there has been at least one child waitlisted for preschool. Obviously, this feels like a direct reflection of going back to one, once class. I know I've said this before, but I really advocate for bringing back two classes. Preschool just feels like such formative years that kids need such direct support. And that's a problem in itself. But when we're denying access to a child to come to this school feels wrong to me. Like add another teacher, employ another person, that, it's a life that we should be enriching with our school because we can. And it's been done before, so we should keep doing that and not turn kids away who want to go here.
Are you aware of anybody being on a waitlist or a waitlist being created?
Yep, Pat reached out to me and right now, we only have one pre-K student. So that student has been for the interim, put on a waitlist. We have 17 total pre-K numbers, 11 pre-K four, six pre-K three, and two of the students are attending half-day.
And why was the person put on a waitlist? Why was a waitlist created?
So Pat reached out to me and she said that they have done a waitlist at one time in the future. We were at 17 and so we did just pause until we spoke about the budget relative to preschool at the school committee meeting. Today's discussion or the upcoming meeting? Well, I thought we're going over today, the budget needs.
Okay, that's a reference. And are those two children that are going to be half-day, is that, do you know if that's a parent request or a need, like service request?
I don't know. I just know one is pre-K four and one is pre-K three.
Okay.
The information didn't come through with request or not.
Are you in a position where you feel like you, until we get a principal, could make that decision of having two preschool classrooms? Or is that something that you would rather wait to a principal?
If it's budgetary, it behooves us to have a conversation with the school committee, correct?
Yeah, so I guess when I was looking at the budget and I was talking to Caitlin, we have, we have 10 classroom teachers budgeted for, but we currently have nine classroom teachers. Am I saying that correctly? I can go back to my email. So I think, what, I think there is a classroom teacher budgeted in the current budget as it sits.
Caitlin?
Yes, because we went back to the January budget, it had a, in the budget was two.
Two preschools.
So with that information, do you feel like you could make that decision? Or would you want to wait till an interim principal to?
Again, I said I wanted to come to the school committee and have a discussion since the school committee has expressed interest in both preschool and making any changes.
If the budget doesn't change and we have a second teacher, why wouldn't we do it?
Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm just.
Yeah, so, yeah, and then Caitlin's asking, are you, are you making that decision now? Or are you, knowing that we have the budget, so that's not an issue anymore, are you looking to make that decision? Or are you looking to wait until the new principal comes on board and make the decision then?
We could make the decision and then the new principal could do, you know, we could post the position and hopefully by the time it's posted and we have applicants, the new principal would be here and could do the interviews.
The other question is space, because I know that that space was reallocated for a different use.
I don't have an answer to space at this particular time.
What do you mean? My understanding was that was already reallocated for some other purpose. Am I right?
I would be willing to use that space for PT and other classes.
So we would have to rethink where they would go if we open that back up as a classroom?
Versus their current rooms that they have? Yeah. Yeah.
The OT does.
PT didn't.
I mean, unfortunately, the poor physical therapist doesn't always have a dedicated space at any one of our Union 28 schools. And has been super flexible and adaptive in making it work. Ideally, of course, we would like all of our teachers and staff members to have their space. But if we're bringing on a second preschool, then we have to make some decisions.
So that puts nine, not, what, eight and nine in a class? It's a very small class.
Well, if we accepted that child that's on the waitlist, we'd be at 18.
18, so nine and nine, but then we have to, which could be a half morning, half afternoon.
Yeah.
What? Can you just go to the microphone just so we can hear you? I can't hear you.
We've had smaller preschool classroom sizes than that in the past. Like I've had eight students in a year before.
Yeah.
With the two classrooms.
During COVID, of course, we had smaller classes.
No, 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 this is like the second year I was here, I do believe. And if we look at the needs of the preschool class, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to have two preschool classrooms.
Do we have budgeted a para position?
So we have fif, yeah, we have 15 para positions budgeted. We have five, or five, oh, excuse, 10.4 something, I rounded up to five paras returning. So it, we still have opportunity for that. And they were pre-budgeted before. And last year, we only had at the highest 13 and a half paras higher. Or FTDs, however you want to look at it. But, so never even got up to that 15, so we have room. Okay.
Put one thing on the radar too, the potential for having one preschool classroom with additional support in our co-taught classroom.
I'm sorry, can you just say that again? I didn't hear you.
Yes, to have one preschool classroom with additional support, sounds like the number is not going to reach 20 for total enrollment. To have one preschool classroom but additional support in that classroom all the time or a co-taught preschool classroom, two teachers in one classroom. It might be terrible ideas.
No idea is terrible. We will take all ideas. I think, I think, seeing that we have the budget for it, it's already there, it's already budgeted for. We'll have the space if we move people around again. To me, it makes sense to simply reinstate the second classroom. Happy about something, yay. So, I mean, that would, that would be, my recommendation would be to, to put the second classroom in.
Yeah, that's why I looked into that and asked all those questions.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
I think that makes sense. And I think that talking about that waitlist too, I don't know when that decision is made. Like are we going to continue it until we have someone? Are we going to uplift it? I don't know what the.
What are the protocols for the waitlist?
I don't think we have any established protocols, but if we don't want a classroom with 18 and we're in the midst of hiring, I would wait. Let the person know that there's an anticipated hiring. But it doesn't seem fair to say, we'll take you if we find another preschool teacher and for. preschool teacher and for some reason we don't. So in all fairness, I think we would communicate to the parent that we are posting and searching for a second preschool teacher.
That's reasonable. It is a change in our makeup, so I do think we have to vote to make that change?
Oh, wow.
In makeup of what? The preschool program.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we add a second preschool classroom for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Nope. Oh, we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously. So Jen, I would request that you put the posting up for a preschool teacher as soon as possible so that we can get that started. And then are we needing to post for paras?
It's already posted.
Do we want to refresh the postings so they come back to the top?
Pam is very good about staying on top of the postings and refreshes when necessary.
Well, I think, I think we need paras.
I think they would fill all of those positions, yeah.
Yeah, it's listed as just paraprofessionals, one-to-one paraprofessionals, and then a point five FTE paraprofessionals, I think. Yeah. So that's just general now is what is listed on there. It doesn't say numbers, amounts, it's just plural.
And then would you please let the PT and OT know that there are changeable means just so they're aware? All right, we have anything else? You're so quiet.
It was like a Dave interview, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right. I just don't want to.
Good day.
Disess anything. All right, so that's all we had on the agenda for today. We've gone through the budget, we've made some adjustments.
Do you just mean the preschool or did you actually, okay, so no cutting of any line items? You discussed some line items, but?
Well, we have to get more information on lines 102 and 103.
So you're waiting for more information, so no, no cuts yet?
No.
Okay, good. And can I ask the question, when many of us were here, your last meeting was whatever, sometime in July, and the next meeting was scheduled later this month. First question, is that meeting still on tap? August, whatever it was, twenty-second? And can I ask why the sudden meeting with forty-eight hours' notice? This just came up very quickly and this was not what you had originally planned on in July, so why the sudden meeting?
Because the select board has requested that we attend the meeting on August seventh and talk about our budget. So we needed a meeting ahead of that to discuss our budget and that's the date that was.
August seventh, and what, they're discussing current fiscal year twenty-four budgets?
With all departments.
That are already passed and approved? And did they give any indication why they're looking at currently past budgets instead of future budgets?
Because all the rest of the town departments cut their budgets and so they're looking in preparation, I'm assuming, and I don't want to speak for them, but my assumption is in front of the special town meeting that generally happens in the fall, if there's going to be any change to anything, that they would have that ready for that meeting and then looking forward FY twenty-five budgets and beyond in case there's a need for a two and a half override.
Okay, so if I, make sure I can understand it. So other departments cut their budgets and I was part of another department where we cut our budget. And so the select board is looking to potentially reinstate some of those funds. They're potentially looking at maybe a two and a half override. I'm not asking you to speak for them, I'm just trying to see what was communicated to you. Whether they would look for some kind of override or to see if the school would cut to then fund back some of the other departments?
Nope, there was no request from the school, there was no request from the town to the school committee to cut our budget. The request was all town budgets to just look at their FY twenty-four budget. Because our budget was more than we had asked for initially, there didn't seem much likelihood that we were going to need to add to our budget, so we went through to make sure that what was budgeted was appropriate, just like all the other town departments did.
This budget, as a reminder, was your very first budget that you folks presented in January. This is not more than what you asked for, this is your budget.
This was actually the very first draft budget that came to us before and then we worked on it. We did not, we, well, we worked on it from there. This was our jumping off point, then got brought back on the May town meeting. So, so, so there was unlikely that we were going to need to add to our budget since this was the biggest budget that was presented to us. So more likely that we were going to need to ask questions about budget lines that hadn't been spent, see if it was still appropriate to have that money in that line and move forward from there. But again, just to reiterate, the town never asked the school committee to cut their budget at all. All town departments were just asked to go back and look at their budgets and see where they're at.
But if this budget is already passed, you didn't need to look at it. You know what you had presented, you know what got passed. And so I guess the reason I'm bringing it up is that it's been a rough year, right? There's been, we feel a lot of lack of transparency and then suddenly this meeting comes up and we hear it's talking about budgets and cuts and that the, the school has given back more money than it's spent. I would at least, at a minimum, ask the school committee to at least appreciate the perspective of these folks out here, that it doesn't feel like, how shall I say it? It, it feels like you're going in the opposite direction of what we'd asked for. And just because the Board of Selectment, Select Board asked you to look at your budget that's already been passed, it didn't mean you had to meet today to look at cutting areas because what you talked about was areas that would be reduced down. That was the bulk of this discussion, was what specific line items to cut down. So if not to cut down, then what other purpose was there?
To redistribute to a different line.
You never said, I asked that earlier, I said that would be a great idea. You never said anything earlier on about redistributing until you brought it up, Caitlin, much later on. But that was not how the beginning of this meeting was presented, it was what can we reduce? I think you're, I think you're kind of switching that around.
I don't, that, that's your opinion, Mark? I, I, look, my, I've been transparent, as transparent can be all along. I, nowhere did the school committee ever say anything about cutting the budget. That was never in our agenda, that was never talked about.
The bulk of this meeting was about cutting budget lines. It was not about redistributing them.
This meeting was about looking at the budget and what was spent last year and what is budgeted for this year and making sure that that was appropriate. So if there was a budget line that had an excessive amount of money left in it at the end of the year, then it behooves us to look at that line and say, does that still make sense? Now, we wouldn't know that until after all of the money had been spent, which is at this point mid-July. So this is the time that we would look at that budget and say, does it make sense to still have that budget in that line at that level? If it doesn't, let's change it. If it does and every line except a couple, there was good rationale as to why that line was funded the way that it was, okay, then we move forward. But that's what we were doing, we were looking to make sure that the budget was appropriate.
So if, let's change it, let's change it when? For fiscal twenty-five?
I'm not sure your question.
You're saying, you're here to look at this current budget, fiscal twenty-four, to see if any changes needed to be made, but yet you're saying not to this budget, so I assume you're talking about next year's budget?
I don't, I don't. No, we're looking at this budget, fiscal twenty-four. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I feel like wrapping my head against this.
We're not talking about where we're going to put the money. Like we talked about like the, I think it was the special substitute line, if we really need it. We didn't say like, okay, well, if we're, you know, we've spent five thousand, we should move that five thousand to this line. I think that's where, we didn't talk about like, it, it sounds like we're just reducing it, it doesn't say, we're, we're not talking about how we can distribute, so I think from the audience.
That's how everybody.
I think that's because rationale given was we should keep the lines the way they are because X, Y, and Z. So then, okay, now we're, we're going to keep the lines the way they are, with the exception of line 102 and 103, which we're going to get more information about because we haven't seen any money come out of those lines in a couple of years, so why do we have those lines?
I don't understand all that, I just don't think it's going to reduce the distribution part. Like I understand the part that we're looking at, like, oh, we haven't used that for three or four years, why is it there? I get that, but I just don't understand, like, why would we make, we share a test topic?
Well, I think because we haven't gotten to that point either. So we, we are like, hey, this line item looks okay, let's just leave it. I'm not going to say this line item looks like it could be moved and now we want to move it here because I don't have an agenda for where to move it, but I think it's just like looking through the different line items and I think that there is a little bit of assumption here that change means cut and that's not necessarily what we're looking at. We're just looking at change means, it could mean a ton of different things, right? It could mean cut, it could mean redis or distribute, like, but that wasn't the agenda or our goal, it was just like, hey, look, you know, we have different line items, it looks like a last couple of years, some haven't been spent, let's look at this, does this need to be here? Does it need to be in, in special ed substitutes? Oh, it does, great, sounds good, let's move on. Oh, it doesn't, oh, then what is that next step and what does that look like? Do we need it somewhere else? Do we not need it at all, that kind of thing? And I think we haven't had that discussion because we just haven't had to get there.
Well, we appreciate that. Like we came back, like we're doing the budget again?
No, no. And, and like we have to put possible vote, otherwise we can't vote. So like those are just some things that we have to put on there because otherwise we can't make any votes or make any changes, like what we did with preschool.
I want to speak about this and kind of be in opposition to what you're saying because I think we've got a budget, but other people in town are going to look at the money that was not spent in the last year. And when the question comes up, should we have an override? They're going to say, oh, the school committee didn't use its money, so therefore we don't need to do that, they don't need all that money. Whereas in fact, we need to be able to justify, and that's what was going on today, was justify each area where we didn't spend the money. And say, well, we do need that line item and it does need to be that big because we need to be able to justify our budget for, you know, the rest of the town. Because I'm not sure that everybody in this town votes for an override for the school committee. They may say, well, you know, my taxes are high enough, I don't want to go in further. And so I think we need to think about this as far as money wasn't spent and there was a lot of money that wasn't spent. And it doesn't look good unless we can justify it.
Yeah, exactly. I'm going on August seventh to the Select Board as are all the other heads of departments with their budgets and they're going to say, where are you at? What does that mean? And I need to be able to rationalize our budget. So we sit here today, we ask, I ask questions about each line, I got answers so that when I go to the Select Board, I can speak to this budget with confidence and say, yep, we've gone through every single line, there's a rationale of why we need each and every dollar, or there isn't and we've redistributed it this way or that way, we've made decisions about preschool, on and on and on, so that I can speak intelligently about this budget and confidently about this budget. That was the purpose of today.
From the viewpoint of conservation function, at little tiny amount of money, no one's ever asked us any questions about it because it's so small, but they are going to ask questions about this budget.
Yep. All right, so we've, we've gone through our agenda, there's nothing further, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. All second it. At three fifty-one. Oh, you know what, actually technically we lost Jen. All in favor? Aye. So thank you for coming out, I know the time was difficult, I appreciate that. We'll be back to our regular.